January 12th, 2021. This is the regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the December 22nd regular meeting?
Okay.
Any changes? Seeing no changes. All those in favor? Okay. Next, we have the report from superintendent.
Hi, good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. I have just a few items of my report here, and then I'll be coming back later to talk more about testing. So as I informed the board and the community on Friday, we made a temporary one-week shift to remote learning in order to address the significant staffing issues related to the mandatory quarantines through contact tracing, illness, as well as the increase in students making short-term transitions to remote learning after the holidays. I did want to affirm to everyone that our health and safety protocols within the schools are strong, and we are committed to providing clarity around our expectations for students, families, and our employees in order to ensure that our school buildings are safe places to learn. And we will resume the in-person hybrid model next week with the purple cohorts of BMS and RHS on Tuesday. It is a modified schedule next week because of the holiday on Monday, so that cohort will be coming in Tuesday, Wednesday, and the gold on Thursday, Friday, and then CLS students on Wednesday as a result of the planning day that was previously scheduled for Tuesday in that building. And as it relates to this temporary shift, I did want to inform the board that the principals let me know that there's been good engagement by the students in the transition to remote learning in these first two days. And I wanted to commend our students for their resiliency and our teachers for their strong connections with their students that make that engagement possible. At this time, I wanted to share with the board a sample of something very cool that is happening in remote learning, in a remote environment, in a virtual environment that actually is also applicable in the hybrid model. And that is a virtual counseling office that was put together by the CLS social worker, Ms. Labruto, as well as the CLS intern school counselor. She's interning from New Paltz as part of equivalent to what would be student teaching but for counselors. And they put together a virtual counseling office. So I'm just going to very quickly share my screen just to show the board the type of very interesting ways that we have found to stay connected, while also giving another example of the great work that our employees are all doing. One second here. Sorry about that. Am I allowed to share with me?
You should be. It's showing sharing.
Okay.
There you go.
Can we see this? All right. So if you look at the screen here, this is a bit moji environment. This is actually a Google slide, but this is a virtual counseling office. And I think they just did a fantastic job on this, so kudos to both of them. And I know that Emily is here, and she also, she must be so proud of her department, and she'll talk more about them later. But if you see around this environment, it's very click-friendly, so students can go over. And this is actually a story that takes you to a YouTube link. I'll show you an example of a few. There's some outdoor activities, so if you click here, it actually takes you to things to do outside. So it's really pretty incredible in general. And then also, you can see there's some anxiety. This is the parent and guardian's corner, so there's some activities for parents to do there. Let me go back to the first one. I love this calming corner here that was symbolized by the yoga mats. If you go there, you'll see that the student has some things to try. This is an interactive painting website down in the lower-left corner. And when you click on that, you can become, it automatically opens up like this for the students. You become Jackson Pollock, which is, it's so interesting and therapeutic in a lot of ways. And I just wanted to, you know, show that to the board and also to, again, commend them for just being creative. You can click through that whole entire world. It's a virtual environment that is so student-centered, and it has a big impact on their overall wellness for students. And that's, it's just one example of so many that we hope to continue to share with the board just to see examples of the type of things that are going on in the school. So that's an example. You saw an example recently from the high school. Now, that's an example from CLS. And, you know, in the future, maybe we can invite them to show it better than I did. It was shared with me, and I was just so excited that I wanted to share with all of you. I also wanted to inform the board that I'm pleased to say that the district hosted their first meeting of a district-wide equity team. This session was moderated by our Director of Special Services, Emily Davison, who's joining us this evening. There was representation among the teaching and professional staff and individuals from all three school buildings and district offices. This initial session included some introductions, discussions on a few selected readings, and setting norms for the committee's ongoing operations. This committee has put forth a robust schedule agreeing to meet twice monthly. And as I mentioned earlier, later in tonight's meeting, I will be discussing a proposed COVID-19 surveillance testing strategy for the district, as well as the coordination that we're putting into place for assisting the vaccination of our employees. And that concludes my report.
Anybody have any questions on that? Matt?
Hey, Albert, just to follow up from my email a couple of days ago in terms of the remote learning schedule tomorrow. Were you able to find any information out about the fact that there's no live instruction tomorrow?
I wrote to Mr. King, and, you know, he clarified to me that there would be instruction on that schedule. So I communicated with him directly on that.
Okay. I know there are definitely some examples where that's not the case.
Okay, I could follow up with him again, but as soon as I got that, I reached right out, and I asked him to reiterate that as well.
Okay, thanks for reaching out to him.
Thank you for sharing that from the counselors. That is really amazing. What a great use of technology, and I'm sure it's very helpful for the kids. I mean, that's, I appreciate getting to see that. Thank you. As far as the closure this week, I know the board has heard from many people. I know it was a very difficult decision to do that, but there was no, there was no choice. And, you know, we look forward to going back to the hybrid model next week. Anyway, thank you. Thank you for your report. If there's nothing else, we'll move on. We have an opportunity for public comment. If anyone would like to make a comment, please raise your hand or let me know in some way. I don't see. I don't see any, so I'm going to move on, but we have another opportunity in case I miss you later in the agenda. So we'll move on to our reports and discussion. And our first one is our annual special services report by Emily Davison. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you so much. I am going to go ahead and share my screen at this point, and then we can get started. So first of all, I want to just say thank you to the Board of Education and to the superintendent who all invited me to speak to you today. I also wanted to thank the superintendent for his leadership over the last few months. It has been a challenging few months, as you well know. And it's been wonderful to have his leadership and guidance and his support through this time. As you all know, I am the Director of Special Services. And in that role, I oversee the instructional services for students with disabilities, as well as our students who receive English as a new language support services. Additionally, in this role, I am the McKinney Vento liaison for the district, the foster care liaison for the district, and the 504 compliance officer for the district, though the assistant principals really facilitate 95% of 504 compliance meetings and needs and issues. In addition, I sit on a number of district-wide committees. However, for tonight's presentation, I really am going to be focusing on, oh, I made it fancy. I forgot about that. Focusing on the instructional programs that my office does oversee. So we'll be talking about the Office of Special Services, and we'll look at some of the numbers from this year. And we'll be talking about what special services look like in the time of COVID. I'll be talking about some programmatic highlights at the elementary, as well as the secondary schools, and then district-wide. And then I'd like to talk about what I envision going forward for my departments. Of course, at any point in time, please stop and ask clarifying questions or any points where you would like me to expand on something that I have said. If I'm not able to answer your question and give you the information you're looking for now, I will certainly follow up with an answer in the coming days. So let's look briefly at our numbers. Currently, there are 123 students who receive school-age services in the Rhinebeck Central School District. That equals about 12% of our overall population. That number, 123, is down from 126, which was the number represented last year at the same time. And that's interesting, though, because we also see a decrease in our percentage. Our percentage last year was 13.26, and now we're at 12.3. The reason for that percentage decrease is really, has more to do with the increase of overall enrollment versus those three students. There are 101 students being served in district by in-district providers, and there are 12 students who are attending out-of-district programming. You'll see that that does not obviously equal 123. There are a number of students who are receiving parent's leave-place services and/or are not receiving any services because at this time, they're being provided services and instruction in a homeschooling program. So there's that, there's that reason for that discrepancy. The 12 students who are in out-of-district, who are in out-of-district programming, that is down from last year. Last year, it was 14. We did have a couple of students graduate. We did not make any shifts to students coming into district from an out-of-district placement other than newly enrolled students. And so we actually had two students who newly enrolled to the Rhinebeck Central School District who moved into our 811 class, who otherwise would have needed to be served out of district. All right, moving on to, right now, we have 84.3% of our students with IEP being taught in the general education classroom 80% or more of the time. That is significant because, as you know, one of the requirements that we have as a Committee on Special Education is to ensure that we're providing special education services in the least restrictive environment. What that means, the least restrictive environment, is an environment where they have access to the general education content, their peers, their neurotypical peers, as well as the, as well as the general education content experts. So that is, that is an excellent percentage. And then in terms of the types of disabilities we serve, there are 13 classifications of educational disability. Almost 75% of our students fill, fit into one of, to three different classifications: other health impairments, learning disabilities, and autism. Any questions? That was a lot of data. Any questions so far? I'll just keep talking. And next, I'd like to talk about English language learners. Currently, we have 20 English language learners in the Rhinebeck Central School District, and the languages represented are Spanish, Vietnamese, and Chinese. And currently, we have less than five students in temporary housing. That number is down from last year. There have been a number of different rent relief programs, as you know, during this pandemic, and so that could be a reason for that. I do think that, I am surprised by that number because I know that our neighboring districts don't see a decrease. And so I'm curious to see what happens when the dust settles from the pandemic and we, and things start to reopen.
Yes. Go ahead. You sure? Okay.
Yeah.
I did think of a question. On the left-hand side, the 84.3% of students getting general education setting more than 80% of the time. Do you know how our neighboring districts fare? I mean, it sounds like a great number. I'm just curious how it compares.
You know, that is not a data point that we've looked at since, really, 2016. We haven't compared it across the districts. And I believe it was 2016, New York State Ed did do a comparative study, and they grouped us. And this was before I joined Rhinebeck, but I had a chance to reflect upon our data. They were able to group us in kind of green, yellow, and red zones. Red, obviously, being a high-alert zone. And at that time, and I would say our percentage is very similar. At that time, we were faring very well in those, in that percentage. So I can't speak to our neighboring districts, but I can say that we are well within kind of the recommended guidelines of New York State Ed. And those are numbers that every October are sent to State Ed. That's part of our October snapshot. And so they have, so we have an opportunity to receive feedback from them should there be a concern on their part.
Emily, I just had a question. So the students attending out-of-service, out-of-district services, has there been any change to that because of COVID? Or have those services been kind of steady?
Well, they're, they're changing. I feel like every day, Tom Brunell and I receive emails about programs shifting to remote or back to a hybrid schedule. I will say that has been one of the biggest challenges that we've experienced during this, during this time, the last few months, which is trying to make sure that we know what our students are receiving out of district, knowing what their remote instruction looks like, knowing they have access to it, and following up and communicating with the out-of-district placements about what are we doing when we don't see access, when we don't see, we don't see growth. And so that is an ongoing conversation that we're having with our partnering schools, but also we're having as directors of districts across Dutchess County, across the region. We're talking and we're sharing feedback so that we, as a group of directors, Dutchess County directors, really together have a pulse on what's going on in our out-of-district placements. Now, generally, at this point in time, I've visited all the out-of-district placements for the year. I've had an opportunity to see the students. I've had an opportunity to walk the grounds if it's a new placement. I haven't, obviously, I haven't had that opportunity this year, so it feels, does feel somewhat disconnected. But certainly, we're responding to the needs that arise.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So let's talk a little bit more about, about Office of Special Services during COVID. So the Rhinebeck Central School District really takes a student-centered approach to meeting the needs of students. And so that means that students with disabilities, that's our diverse language learners. We really do. And of course, we're adhering to the health and safety requirements and all written state and federal guidance. Considering, considering what has occurred over the last few months, the amount of guidance that we've received, I would say, since school opened is very minimal, written guidance. And so we're constantly engaging with each other as a group of directors to make sure that we are doing our best to align programming and align our response to the pandemic. But because we are taking a student-centered approach, it really is, we really need to also look within. So the first thing we need to be mindful of is preparation. And so over the course of the summer, I had the opportunity to read the guidance, meet with teachers, host a voluntary faculty meeting with my special education teachers and my E&amp;L teachers to prepare them for what was to come in September. I created a resource guide, an operation guide for our office where we were able to articulate changes and practices, whether it's attending CSC meetings, progress monitoring, what creating a schedule looks like, what the expectation for remote instruction looks like based on the special education services being provided, and what their data collection looks like. And so that was provided to teachers and in my department, and continues to be updated and revised. And currently, I'm updating it and revising it for the annual review season that's about to come upon us. We also, we also work closely in this office with all of the buildings to make sure that we had both our remote, our hybrid, and our in-person schedules that reflected the students' IEPs and the needs that they had and contain the accurate amount of instructional minutes for E&amp;L program. And so we did all of that. We focused, we developed the teacher's schedules along with the building leaders. And then the teachers, the teachers reached out and then created their specific student schedules. So at sixth grade, a student with special needs received a service schedule that included not only their general ed classes, their special ed services, and then their related services. We also, we also had the opportunity to send a mailing home to the family. These are your service providers. These are their email addresses. These are their names. They will be contacting you. Be prepared. We don't typically do that. We typically let the providers just contact the parents, but we wanted to give them that information as well. So that does feed into the aspect of communication that is necessary to foster healthy relationships in the school district. So I spoke of the open houses. I spoke of the mailing that we provided to families. We also, especially for our students receiving E&amp;L services, are using a new technology called, it's an app for your phone call, Talking Points. And Talking Points is, is an app that allows the teacher to text with a parent or student. And it uses translation services of Google, as well as human translation, it's a blend of the two, to then translate the text. And so when the parent texts back, they may text in Vietnamese or in Chinese or in Spanish, and then, but it comes up on Ms. Foti's phone as English. And so that's been really helpful to connect with students as well as with parents. I would also like to applaud our CLS staff and E&amp;L teacher at the elementary school, Ms. Riddle, because 100% of our E&amp;L parents attended their parent-teacher conferences in November, which is huge. And I would say that we had, we had a fantastic turnout for our E&amp;L presentation in October with parents. All of those, of course, are being, took place via Zoom. And I think that one of the, one of the highlights, one of the takeaways from this experience that we have learned in my office is the access that this format provides for our families, not just to attend CSC meetings, but parent-teacher conferences and informational sessions. Finally, it's, we, this is a time to be very flexible. Flexibility is not something that special education departments like because there are a lot of rules and regulations that govern it, as well as rules and regulations and units of study that govern E&amp;L service delivery. Those have not changed. But what is flexible is our ways to meet the needs of students who need to shift from one learning modality to another. A lot of shifting from, that does occur, seems to occur, during, from hybrid or in-person to remote, and then back. And then there's a little bit of shifting and catching up. My teachers have been very, very, very flexible in responding almost within 24 hours with a revised schedule to reflect that student's current learning environment. We at the middle school, high school, have the supplemental support periods where if we're seeing a student needs even more support than we've scheduled for, we will increase their time for in-person instruction as much as we can in order to access and engage in the learning. And then finally, we hold CSC meetings constantly to respond to student needs, as evidenced by parent concerns and/or progress report and current functioning. So all of that leads to really developing relationships that are built on trust, collaboration, and open dialogue to meet students' needs. And that's what happens at the CSC meeting. That's the goal. Any questions about special services in the time of COVID? I can't see everyone, so please speak up.
I don't, I don't see any hands. I was looking too. I don't see any hands. I just want to say that's so impressive, 100% for the E&amp;L open house. I remember when that, we just started having them and how low the attendance was in those. And to come kind of full circle now, that's really great.
It's been really, it's been really incredible to see the reach outs. And I'll talk a little bit more about some things that we're proud of in that department in the coming slide. All right, so, so district-wide, district-wide highlights. Within this whirlwind of the last few, last year, I would like to celebrate that we, in spite of being, having our schools closed, our teachers did not stop. And in June of 2020, we had 14 students who graduated with IEPs, who had IEPs. They graduated from the Rhinebeck School District. Nine of them with Regents diplomas, four with locals, one with a skills and achievement credential. And then four students also received their CDS credential. So that was a huge, a huge lift on the students' parts. A lot of them were working and balancing the needs of supporting, engaging in that work and being essential workers in some cases with their academic needs and their CTI needs. And it was partnership of the summissurenci, our 11th and 12th grade special education teacher, our council counselors, our high school administration, and the parents, and of course, the students. So that's a huge success. This year, we also watched our students in our 811 class shift to CLS. I mean, it's BMS from CLS. That was an exciting, an exciting shift. They've done a really great job. And in fact, I mentioned in my, in my data slide, we actually had two new students enter into that class starting in September. So not only did they transition well, but they also welcomed new friends and peers into that group. We, we had the opportunity, learning opportunity, to interview several candidates over this remote format. And so we welcomed three new special education teachers into our district and one, a teaching assistant. So the special education teachers are Ms. Darling at the elementary school, who's teaching fifth grade, Ms. Larson at the middle school, who's teaching sixth, and then Mistress Need, who's teaching seventh. And then because Mistress Need was a teaching assistant, we welcomed Ms. Martin as a teaching assistant to the middle school, and she's actually working in our 811 class. This year is not a year that many of us want to engage in professional development, but we have five teachers who are doing just that, and for two weeks out of the year are learning very intensely the building blocks of our English language. They're learning Orton Gillingham, which is a multi-century reading program. And this is something that we started about two or three years ago, sending teachers each year to be trained. And I am proud to share that three of those teachers are actually also brand-new to the district. So not only are they having the learning curve of a new district, but also new content. And it's been very exciting to hear them come back with ideas and inspired by that learning. In our E&amp;L program, we have introduced the Tell Progress Monitoring Tool by Pearson. And it really, it looks at the four aspects of language: oral language, written language, speaking and listening skills, and which is what's measured each year by the NICE's lab for our E&amp;L students. And this is a tool that provides us with a lot of really great data to then share with parents and with teachers. We're using this tool quarterly at this point, and we've aligned it to be current and to coincide with our progress reporting timelines. And we've shared it with parents and teachers. And teachers have found that it's been very, very useful, easy to read. The graphs are colorful and simple, and it's digestible material. Students really like it because it's on the iPad, and it has a game-like element to it. And so they've been, they've been pleased in engaging in that. There, we are at this point doing our second round of testing. I mentioned that we also, I mentioned progress reporting. Our progress reports to parents for E&amp;L Our progress reports to parents in the, for E N L services have been, have been adjusted, completely overhauled quite. In fact, and our E N L teachers developed a new progress reporting tool to parents. It's, it has a data page, like a data snapshot page where it lists the. Data points such as the N I S A S lad or the N I S A tell. It also, it also lists running record information. And, and map and then N W A map information. Then it has a narrative section and it also has a section for learning habits. And so we translate that to the necessary, the home languages and we send that home quarterly. We also share it with teachers. And finally, our E N L teachers just last month started creating, started creating a E N L newsletter. And so we send that home monthly. At C L S, we're currently servicing the majority of our students in person. Which is fantastic. We, we do have a, a couple of remote students and for some of our in-person students, we do need to do some of our related services. Excuse me remotely, just because of the shortened debt school day. But by and large, the majority of our students are being serviced in person. Our special education programming includes one to two hours of integrated co-teaching daily. Consultant teacher services, direct or indirect resource room, special class instruction. This year only in the fifth grade. And then specialized reading instruction. And that specialized reading instruction is that Orton Gillingham. Now, in years past, when we, I've shared with the board, I have talked about the differences in those models. Does anyone have any questions about those? I'm happy to go through each of them individually and speak to them, speak to the differences.
Don't see anybody. You're gonna have to wave if you.
I know.
I don't see anybody.
Alright. Alright. So programming and highlights at B M S and R H S. I grouped them to B M S and R H S together because their schedule is so similar that there's a lot of repetition. In terms of programming, I will just say that the B M S does offer consultant teacher services and resource room as well as special class. And R H S does not have that consultant teacher model. That's only, actually that's only housed at, at B M S in this district. But what R H S does have is resource room and integrated co-teaching and E L A and math. And so they pick up the integrated co-teaching model that was, that's used at the elementary school. This year. The majority, our students with special needs are attending. In person, who are attending the hybrid program, attend their classes in person in the purple cohort on Monday and Tuesday. And then on Thursday and Friday, we have a three hour block of time that provides supplemental in-person services. So what that looks like, it, it looks like three periods and they work either in a five to one ratio with. Two, two of the periods are with the special ed teacher and then one period is with the teaching assistant that's on that team. And so they're able to ask questions, gain clarification and receive support for organizational skills. In addition, we have partnered with Smart Staffing, who have, who has a grant through New York State Ed. To provide pre-vocational and career classes. This is different from our career, our college and career class because this is. This is, one, it's across districts. So the students get to meet other students with disabilities in other districts. And two. It's tailored to students with disabilities. And so this is offered virtually this year. And it's a three week program. They meet three times a week and they have an opportunity to work on resume building. They meet members, employers, they work on interview skills and they learn. They actually. Prepare their application for Access V R, which is a transitional employment support program through, through the state. So it acts, it helps them to access transitional support services.
Emily, what would that look like when, when it's not virtual? How was that?
When it's not virtual, well, a couple of different formats, Diane. One, they offered, they, they can offer like a summer camp. Program where it's, it can be a full day and, and it lasts, I, I think a week. And gen-, and generally it's a centralized location and, and the students are, are transported there. Or it could look like an after-school program where we as a district could provide busing for those students to. To, to, to go home after, after the school day and after their, their session. It could happen right in person in, in the high school. The challenge with that, I will say, is that it's, that becomes a numbers game. The virtual format has allowed us to partner with other districts. So Arlington, I believe Spacking Hills is doing it as well. The students are able to, to be grouped that way. It is difficult to, to get a sizable number of students. To, to provide an in-person program, but it's not impossible. And we'll keep looking at it as we move, shift to in-person learning. I, I also, I also wanted to share that Ms. Fody, our English as a New Language teacher at the middle school, high school. Isn't, is currently engaging in a Fulbright Teachers for Global Classroom program. And so that's been really exciting. And I'm going to forward a video that she shared with me. It's a presentation to, to the board. I will forward that to you after this meeting. And, and what that has. What that has meant for our district and how it has that, had that, that has impacted the classroom is that she had the opportunity at the, at the end of. Her coursework to, to deliver a co-taught lesson with our, for our E N L students in the middle school. And partnered with a teacher in Alabama, a Latin teacher. And so the, the two classrooms full of students were able to. Meet each other, engage with each other, learn about, the content was the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. And they were able to learn about that, learn about that. And then develop a, a presentation based on one of the acts in that document. So it was a really. It was a really. Exciting opportunity for the students that they might not have had if we weren't living in this remote world at this time. Any questions about any of those priorities? I mean, any of those, those highlights? So finally, looking forward, I really, my, my overarching goal in this district. And I think in, in my, my professional career has really to, to decrease the barriers in the classroom and the school community. While maintaining high expectations. Our number, our percentage of students with disabilities is, is low. It always hovers around 11 to 13% depending on. Typically, the overall school population. But, but that is only one aspect of our, of, of, of need. We have approximately 25% of our students who have some sort of either educational plan. Whether it's an I U P or a 504, or they receive E N L services. So that's a quarter of our population right there. Who need teaching and learning to happen in a different way. Then if you think about the 20% of our students approximately, who need, who receive free and reduced lunch. We know that students who require free and reduced lunch often have increased. Physical ailments, decreased motor skills. There's an impact of, and, and when we talk about poverty and need, we're looking at the students. Difficulty in concentrating, remembering. We see an increased need of, an increased risk of psychiatric disorders. Managing difficulty in managing emotional, emotions and behaviors. And, and so we have to think about what that, what that rise of our free and reduced lunch percentages means to our instructional program. And, and in addition to that, we have to keep in mind, you know, the percentages across the, the, the nation seem to shift. But generally 25 to 43% of, of our youth are likely to have been exposed to trauma. And certainly that was a statistic before COVID. And I can't imagine what, what that's going to be once we start to come out of this. And as, as you may or may not know, students who've been exposed to trauma. Demonstrate problems with self-regulation, aggression and impulsivity, and then inability to tolerate uncertainty, uncertainty. They have difficulty remembering and concentrating and they often reenact the traumatic events. Which are all, which all can impact their learning and functioning in the classroom. Therefore, we really do need to focus on the classroom and our school community and decreasing the barriers to learning. And so what that means is providing opportunities for multiple opportunities for engagement. For representation of content and for their demonstration of their learning. It's, it cannot be a one size fit all, fits all. So that, that being said, what does that mean? What does that look like? From, from my office for the coming years. As you've seen, a dedication to the increasing the opportunities and the, the, the. Instructional abilities to teach multi-century reading. And so as, as you heard, our, that, our teachers being trained this year. Are predominantly at the, at the upper elementary school, middle school and high school level. So we need to increase that opportunity. In the secondary, in the secondary programming, but also increase that opportunity in the elementary school. And we do that by increasing our time in the co-teaching classes. Right now, programmatically. Our students who receive co-teaching receive one to two hours. I would like to see us be able to increase that to three, maybe even three and a half hours a day. That way they, we can fold in the specialized reading instruction. We can provide small group services. Within the classroom to address more students' needs in a more fluid manner. And reduce the, that pull-out model of resource room and other services such as A I S. Really focusing on, on, on our, the tenant of, of the work that we do in adhering to the least restrictive environment. To that, in that, in, in, in that area, I really want to focus on bringing a, and creating a summer. School program and E S Y program for our, for our students who typically go to Bosse's. And I want to continue to consider in-district options for our students placed out of district. I recently had a conversation with our colleagues, my colleagues in Timeplanes and Red Hook. And we are constantly considering ways that we can share resources and share, share our expertise. To, to hone in on in-district programming in our smaller school districts. I spoke, I spoke briefly of integrate, increasing integrated co-teaching. And I would like to see an increase of co-teaching at the elementary school level from two to at least three hours daily. That allows for opportunity for co-planning, that allows for small group instruction, not just to address I E P goals, but also it can address. Academic support needs. It can, it can create a, a, a rich learning environment within the classroom for. A longer period of time. So we can really hone in on a number of different foundational skills and close those gaps. I also, I'm looking at increasing co-taught classes, classes at the middle school and high school levels. As well in the areas of English and mathematics. We can do that. That can be done with training, careful scheduling and a commitment by the. By the, the school leadership and teachers. And then finally, the school date doesn't end. When E L A class is over, it is also about, about meaningful participation in extracurricular activities and opportunities. It was, it was a pleasure of mine to read the most recent Rhinebeck Reality Newspaper at the high school where I saw. No less than four of my students with disabilities as published authors in our school district. So yay Rhinebeck, Rhinebeck Reality. And I, and I think it's important to also think about that smart staffing hat and how to expand that opportunity. And also to develop peer and social support opportunities, especially as our students with moderate to. High special education needs in our eight one one class continue to grow and mature.
Emily, did you talk a little bit more about what would it, what would it look like for the, for an in-district summer school program? Is there a significant cost? To have a program like that or?
A lot of our, not necessarily. We haven't, we haven't fully fleshed out the numbers. We have, we get a lot back in state aid from summer services. And so it would, it, what it would look like, it's a, it's a, it would be a six-week program. I would, I would look at. Models in the area, most of which are half-day models, eight to 11 or eight to 11:30. Where it would really be for a student to require specialized instruction. Our students who are, who, who. Who show it's significant regression and need continued, continued instruction, specialized instruction. So that's typically, not always, but typically our students in the eight one one class.
When it comes to like a summer school program, would, would that be something that if our own teachers weren't. Available or interested in that you could hire out because it's for the, just for the summer? Or how would that work with staffing?
Yes, there could be, we could, we could post for that position. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Steve.
Thank you very much, Emily. This was very, very helpful and informative. And your, your department and yourself do a tremendous amount of work. And it really shows at these presentations. On the integrated co-teaching, is there any data that, that supports going from two to three and what benefits the children? Achieve later on in their academic career? Do you know what I mean? Like?
Well, if you, so that's a great question. I cannot provide you, you know, a, a documented spreadsheet of how many hours of. Of co-taught instruction equals what kind of percentage gains or gap closures. But what I can tell you is the types of services and supports that can be offered if it was increased. So right now. Student receiving two hours of integrated co-teaching time has the special ed teacher in there for one, one hour of E L A and one hour of math. Typically, you're, you're generally, you're, you're mini lesson lasts for 15 to 20 minutes. So that now we're knocked down to 40 minutes. Per content area. And so, so that's 40 minutes of independent practice on that skill. But what happens of, of the day, you may be able to squeeze in five to 10 minutes of, of review of a previously. Taught skill that's not, that's, that hasn't stuck with the students. But very little, and especially in the world of E L A where really where our teachers are, have these tremendous integrated units. They're working with the readers and writers workshop model. And they, they're, the amount of time that's required in, in E L A, reading and writing at the elementary school, they really is, is well beyond the hour. So, so we're not able to do as much targeted, small group instruction, as much differentiation within the classroom. And so what you're seeing is you may, you, you don't see. What you're seeing is, is a scattered skill focus. So you may see, and, and this quite honestly is driven by I E P goals. You may see some spelling, you know, specialized spelling work. You may see some editing work. You may see some fact, math fact, practice, but you don't see that in every integrated co-teaching classroom because there's just not enough time in the day. So by, by increasing that time in the elementary school and those co-taught classrooms. You can have more of those specialized groupings and thereby closing and closing those gaps. But to your point on data. I am, as much as people might roll their eyes at me at times, I am a data person. And one of the things I do notice, and I didn't mention this in the presentation, is that we have, we have some nice data at the elementary school. In terms of looking at student growth and especially students just with disabilities and how they kind of fit within the larger scheme of their class learning with, using the maps. And I am having preliminary conversations with our director of technology about, about using those data points. For students with disabilities all the way through high school for E L A and, and math. Specifically to look at the effect and continue to look at and have a tool to measure the effectiveness, not just of I C T, but of all of our programming.
Any other questions? Well, Emily, thank you so much for being here. Your department does some great work, especially, especially this past year when it's been incredibly difficult. But there's so much to be proud of there. And I appreciate you sharing kind of your goals and where you're looking to go. That's helpful for us as we get into budget season. But thanks again for being here. Thank you for the presentation. Okay, we're gonna move on to board committee reports and we have stakeholder relations. Megan.
Let's see, the committee met on January 7th. All members were in attendance. And the first thing we discussed was the family town hall. We discussed the positive community response to prior town hall events and explored the pros and cons of hosting another. Town hall led by Albert. We agreed on the benefits of transparency and the value of maintaining connections with families. And the committee agreed that a town hall presentation and accompanying slide deck would support the district's efforts to continue offering the public the latest information. Regarding a summary of our current educational model, least percent, latest, excuse me, latest percentages of students learning in person. Versus remotely and current safety protocols in response to the pandemic. We discussed the value of a Q and A period following this presentation. And a decision was made that Albert will host a town hall on Monday, January 25th. This is a date correction to what is in your packet. This is a date correction to what is in your packet. He will email families the link to the meeting in advance and will also solicit questions via a Google form in advance of the meeting. We then discussed principal presentation to the Board of Ed and reflected on the value of earlier principal presentations and agreed it would be helpful to have a mid year presentation from each of our building principals. We explored the positive response to the early collaborative presentation and agreed that it would be beneficial to follow the same model. We brainstormed potential topics that would be useful to the board, including identifying what's working well at each of the schools, highlighting teacher and student work and how it represents learning and sharing current data from each building. A decision was made that Albert would invite the building principals to make a mid year presentation to the Board of Ed at our February nineteenth. February ninth, excuse me, meeting. Communications plan, we discussed reaffirming the and we reaffirmed the purpose and content of this plan and agreed that many of the goals listed had been or are in the process of being accomplished. A decision was made that Steve Jensen will share this document with the committee via Google Doc, and we will continue to review and find tenants content, fine tune its contents. Website committee, a discussion was had that Steve Jensen reaffirmed the goal of having a new district website by July first of two thousand and twenty one. He further indicated that two subcommittees have been formed to work collaboratively collaboratively on selecting a platform for the district. The first of of subcommittees was the central office and directors, and they will hold their first meeting next Friday via Zoom. And the second was the school subcommittee, which will meet on Mondays via Zoom, dates to be announced. Our committee went on to discuss the value of broadening the purpose of our website to be used as an effective communications platform that streamlines the district's messaging, provides an opportunity to think outside the box and creates maximum usability. A decision was made that the website committee meetings are underway with a shared goal of July twenty first for the new district web platform. Regarding a district brochure, we reviewed proposed costs of this paper brochure and we discussed whether or not to proceed with it in paper format or to digitize its contents and included in district website communications. The committee agreed to digitize the content of this brochure and to include it as part of our website communications platform for families and community members who may be new to or curious about the district. Digitizing this content rather than distributing it in paper form will provide a cost savings to the district, and it will also enable us to easily modify and update its content as things change. District newsletter, we further discussed its format and the content and reaffirmed the importance of providing community education around the school budget. The board's purpose and mission and other news highlights from the district. These highlights included but weren't limited to describing new courses, welcoming faculty, celebrating graduates, congratulating retirees and extending a thank you to the community when annual budgets are passed. The community further discussed the frequency of this newsletter and explored quarterly and semi annually as possible options. We would like to have input from the board on piloting a one time newsletter in the spring of two thousand and twenty one. This will be a single fold format, which will offer four total pages of content. And we'd like to solicit feedback from the public upon their receipt of the newsletter. And the ballpark cost for this would be one thousand four hundred dollars for sixty three, six thousand three hundred copies. The next meeting for us will be Thursday, February fourth, and there's another typo there. It should be twenty twenty one.
Is there any questions or around the decision items?
So I just wanted to comment on the decision to to digitize the brochure rather than doing it in paper, which I can understand. You know, our original thinking had been that we would be distributing it with like real estate agents. And there didn't seem to be an appetite for that among the real estate offices or, you know. So there's less reason to do it in paper, and that makes sense. But I do think that if it is digitized, I would hope it isn't in PDF format. That I don't know if that was discussed at all, but it would be difficult to read and a challenge for accessibility for screen reading and user friendliness. So I just wanted to put in my two cents there.
I I think you're, oh, I'm sorry, Albert, go ahead. Jacqueline, I think I think that's an excellent point, and we did discuss this, and I'll I'll turn it over to Albert, but it was discussed as part of a larger context conversation about utilizing the website as more of a communications platform to make it more interactive and well suited to specific questions that people might have more of a dialogue. So it will not be in PDF form, to my understanding, and I'll turn it over to you, Albert.
Yeah, I think that's correct. I think in general, there's a lot of adjustments that need to be made to our current platform, which is clicking on a link that goes to downloadable PDF and moving into a direction where it's that's not the format. So it's ADA compliant, and it's more about like an about us section. So it's, I think, part of the the bigger scope. What we really decided was we didn't want a separate document. A PDF to me is still a document. And that doesn't really solve what we're trying to do, which is have a more integrated communication approach that is more shareable. Not like a PDF, but in a in a visual format.
Anybody else have anything they wanted to say on for this committee? I just, I I'm all in favor of the town hall. I think that's a great way. It's been 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 a great way since you started, Albert, to communicate with our families. So I'm totally in support of that. As far as the website, I hope part of that when that when that's discussed is going to be who's going to be updating. I think a problem we've had with our website has been keeping it updated and keeping it current. And I think there's not ever really one person responsible for it, and that's probably the the reason why. So that I would just say that should be part of that, you know, as the new website comes comes to be in July or after that, that that should be part of that discussion as well. And then the so that district newsletter, those six thousand three hundred copies, is that for the whole community or is that just the school being distributed to school? That's the whole community?
This is intended for everybody in the district, all residents, as a way to keep them informed of what is going on in the district to celebrate. We're assuming that particularly if we think of content that is more higher level, like like, for example, recognizing retirees, we're assuming that there are many district residents who will see familiar faces. It's to keep the connection with the community, letting them know what's happening in the schools. That's what the spirit.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. I mean, I get in my address, I get one from Pine Plains, I get one from Hyde Park, so I see the local newsletters that go out. So, you know, I think they are a great way to, you know, to update. And there's a lot of times people don't know, oh, this teacher retired or it's it's good for our community. So if it's something we can afford, I'd be in support of of doing that. Yeah. Any last questions for this committee? Jacqueline.
Sorry. So yes, I also support the idea of a district newsletter. That's great to hear. And I look forward to that. I just wanted clarification on the the decision with the the website committee. In the goal is July first for a new district web platform. What exactly, so just choosing who, I mean, to what level of detail? What does that mean?
My understanding from Steve Jensen is that our current provider is actually, Albert, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's actually based out of Newburgh and is unable to continue doing this. And so we actually need to find a new a new person and a new platform to bring the content to the district. Is that, am I speaking to that correctly?
July first is a target date for for a rollover. We we won't lose access to the old one should we need it, but July first is the target date for initiating, if not the site up and rolling, having the agreement with whatever agency that we are we select. And then moving from there. That's a, that's what the goal is. We don't, we won't lose support because the person who runs the website now, it's it's an individual. So it's he's privately contracted out to to maintain that. And he's on board to be with us through the transition. So we won't be in a situation where we're without. But we're targeting July first just to keep an ambitious timeline.
So just as a follow up, that doesn't mean a complete redoing of the website. It's just administration having to do with the hosting, essentially, and administration of it.
No, it really does. It is a complete total redo. So many of the what what I, the position that I had brought to the to this, our committee, to the to the board, external relations committee, was that I I felt it was important to examine those that are integrate well with our learning management systems. So looking at those that integrate with either with Canvas, Google Classroom, and particularly School Messenger. So we're looking at something that is more integrated so that we're not having, you know, all these different ways of accessing information. So Blackboard is a very popular one. School Messenger has a website. Aptige has one. They are school based websites. So we have gotten some samples from others around, but it would be a total overhaul. There are some content that we can we can use, but it would be a completely new environment.
And and we have a goal of July first to do that complete revisioning and redesign of the website?
Have a decision made about the direction. So agreement on like where, like what direction it will be. Like I said, the other one will stay, we'll have the hosting. It won't become live until that is ready. Depending on what what we go with, the transition period is shorter or longer, depending on on which which way we go. I am personally not, and I will defer to the to the committee, but I am not personally in favor of individuals who are doing it, although I think it can be artistic and creative. I think we need something that is a little bit more user friendly, so they can be updated. Because right now, I I've tried very hard, but I have to send a narrative description of what I would like done, and then all the content. It's very difficult. So like when I'm posting the parent emails, it's not just simple as me adding the parent email. I have to write to the person, tell him like where to put it, the date. I mean, it's it's a whole extra. So we're looking at something that is a little bit more designed for schools. So we have, we have to have a decision on the direction. And we're just trying to keep that that deadline to not drag this out unnecessarily long.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. Next, we move on to district COVID nineteen surveillance testing and employee vaccination plan.
Okay. Okay, so it has been very interesting. When I wrote the the memo to the board and I added this to the agenda, there was different information about vaccinations. So I'm going to talk a little bit about that, but I will first start with a proposed testing strategy. So I'm just going to share just a few, very few slides here. So what we're looking at is is surveillance testing. So this is not providing testings for individuals who are seeking a medical diagnosis to see, receive action on. Surveillance testing would be used by an institution like us to get a sense of the general population. This would be randomly tested approximately twenty percent of employees and or students. So I'll talk a little bit more about that with their consent to participate in this random selection over a period of time. So it may take us two weeks to to test twenty percent, but we would do rolling testing as an additional surveillance. The reason that this is is a good effective mitigation effort is it does identify some some very like low symptomatic people who don't realize they're symptomatic, asymptomatic individuals. So it's another effort to just do a a check in a larger community. Again, it is not intended to be, you know, a medical diagnosis that we are providing for for anybody. It would be a random assessment. Now, this particular test is is free of charge. It is something that the county would, we would be using the county's health license. And it's a, it's a, it's called the Binax Now antigen test. And you can see on the screen what it looks like. It's actually about the size of of an ID badge. And it opens up into like the the step cover, I can show you the next page, opens up. This can either be, we can have our people trained to conduct this, and it would be guiding somebody through glass, similar to what you would do if you did a drive up test at at CVS. It could be self administered. And if we wanted to have younger children in some districts, they actually have parents accompany their children to assist with the surveillance testing. And so it is a card and it would be supervised. And the responsibility for the medical component of this does come from Dutchess County Health Department. So they've reached out to all districts and they do have quantity of this, and they're, you know, they're standing by to assist us with that. So if you look here on your screen, you will see what that card looks like when it's closed. When you see when it's open, there are two holes here. You have this reagent here, six drops of the reagent goes there. The person, the individual swabs their nose, I think, five times each nostril, only up about an inch, inserts into this this bottom hole, spins it around three times, and it when it hits that reagent, close the cover. When it hits their reagent solution, there this little indicator on the front, the solution goes up through through that. And you will see there's an indicator there that will reveal if it's a if it's positive for presence of the antigens or negative. And there is control samples that they provide in the kits as well. This is actually been approved as the at home COVID test. So if you see information about a COVID test that you could do at home, this is the at home COVID test, and the county has a supply of them to provide to students. I will say, this has been in the works for a while. It took a little bit of time to prepare the the MOU, which I had shared with the board from the county executives office, and then we had it reviewed by our legal counsel. They have moved on to much more to vaccinations, but I think that this could be potentially another good instrument to be able to provide some of that testing as a surveillance tool. So it's it's more good information for the the district to have. So that's what that that test looks like. There's lots of videos out there of of how this is done. It's not a painful experience. This is a very like low in the nose type of test.
Albert, how accurate are those tests?
Okay, so that's a great question. It it depends on a lot of scenarios. And no antigen test is is accurate as the full PCR molecular test. This is high accuracy of ninety seven and ninety five percent, depending on the range of when the person is expressing the virus. So it's highly accurate on days one to seven. And then, so there's a lot of of data. I actually have, it's in the backup materials of of the accuracy. It is less, it could produce a false negative, which is why you have to take a full context of all of the situation. So if you have been likely exposed and maybe experiencing some symptoms but not severe, and there is a patient fact card that you give it, that's why this is not meant to be like a medical visit. This by classifying it as surveillance testing, it is meant to be a tool that the district uses to assess the situation on a grander level. It's very accurate if someone is positive and they're in the the day one to seven, which is a highly infectious period. It's, you know, very reliable in that regard. But nothing, nothing that happens in fifteen minutes can be to the quality that the molecular test provides. But in a in a climate when it's it's becoming a little bit, it ups and flows with the access to and availability of rapid testing. We have heard reports from some providers not wanting to test children with rapid testing unless they were symptomatic or like, you know, so depending on the supply of the rapid tests, they they ebb and flow and how how much they recommend it being done, absent of any other condition that would warrant it.
And when would we be able to start doing this?
So, you know, I wanted to have a discussion with the board about this, and then once that agreement is signed, they already have the supply. There would be some training involved. I I could look at what those options are, but we could, you know, get this done up and running, you know, within a week to ten days, because the supply already exists. They're really, you know, committed to any district that wants to to start this, to start that. We will not, the tricky part about this is is that you don't want large groups of people congregating, so we wouldn't be bringing, it would be, you know, a slow process over multiple days. Like, we may do ten to fifteen individuals a day. But we also want to be smart. Their advisement is to be smart about when you do that testing. Doing it on a Monday prior to anybody going into their workspaces is advisable, because if there is a positive test, then you they can immediately be isolated, you know, go home. Unless it's a student, they can be picked up, but then they will not have been in those classroom environments, reducing contacts. Similarly, we Uh, but then they will not have been in those classroom environments, um, reducing contacts. Similarly, um, we would, you know, do some random testing if we were to do this for students. And not only employees, we would do it on Thursdays with, uh, Gold Core students. We could do it on Monday mornings with elementary students. You know, we'd have to work out those logistics. But the first step before we could even engage the county is to, this, the agreement, they really won't go much further down the road unless we sign the agreement. And as I said, it is at no cost, but everything in the school has a cost because it's time, it's people who have to do it. So there's no cost for the, the testing, um, or the training, but there will be, you know, some associated time involved.
Can you, you talk a little bit more about the procedure? Like would, would staff have to stay like kind of quasi-quarantine until the results came back? Would they keep their kit until the result came back? Can they do it at home? Like how, what are the different scenarios that you've run through?
Well, you know, it's interesting is the doing it at home is a, is a, is a solution that some, um, places have done. I haven't found examples in New York, but I'm actually willing to ask that question because I think that's an interesting idea because this test has been approved for at home. You would have to have, um, training, which the training is, is watching a video. There are some, so I want to talk to the health department about if it could be done by employees as an at-home testing. But the districts who are doing it, um, who were in what the state previously classified as orange zones, yellow or orange zones. They were doing that, uh, in the morning before anybody went to the classrooms and the results come within 15 minutes. So that's how they were doing it. They're also being very systematic about the randomization. So they weren't taking, you know, all teachers. They were doing like, or a particular grade level. They were doing the most diverse sample they could find. So they would have people at work in transportation. So we may have a bus driver, someone in operations and maintenance, somebody, or you may, a TA, a teacher, a clerical, it's, it's a very diverse representation that you, you, you do. And, um, they remain isolated while the testing occurs. So it usually occurs at the beginning of a workday. And then once those results are done and recorded, then they, they proceed on. And it is only about 15 minutes. So there are some logistical challenges because the schedule starts, the school day starts. So there are some people who, who have that. So we would make some accommodations around that, you know, if, if this is something that we're interested in, you know, I'll engage all of our, our bargaining units and like what they think makes the most sense in it. This is really the first step. We finally got the agreement and so it's just having this initial conversation.
Albert, I'm thinking about the, the mental health aspect of this, of, of testing at school, especially with young children. What are, how are other districts handling that? What has been, I mean, just the anxiety alone of, of being called to test or sent home or waiting for a parent to come if the test is positive?
So I've done some thinking about that. Um, I agree with you. I think that could be very, it could just, it's, uh, for lots of things, it can be scary, it can be self-conscious, it can be a lot of things. I think advanced notice is a good thing. I think getting, uh, consent in advance is one thing, like people know, okay, I get what this is. So we'd be partnering with families who are saying, you know, I would consent to this. And then giving people notice that, you know, you will be in this sample group, which starts on and kind of like letting them know. So it wouldn't be like you show up and then we're going to take you in. So there would be, I think, um, some advanced scheduling there. I do know that the schools who did do it with younger students did invite the parents to do that, uh, with their child. So I think that made it better as well because it was, it was, um, it just felt, I think in those instances, safer for them. I mean, emotionally safer to have the parent involved. So those are some, those are just some of them that I've heard. Uh, I'm trying to get a little bit more details from the schools that, that did do it. Many of the schools that did, do it, did it more of, of an assembly line, which we don't, we're not that size because these were like very, very large schools. So I think it would be a little bit more. I don't want to say homey, but it would be more personalized. We would let them know well in advance because we're talking about, um, fewer numbers.
I, I, for, for me, that would really dictate the timeline of this because I think we have the real potential to cause some secondary trauma to what's already happening with, with the, with the COVID crisis.
Right. So I think if we, if we can also, um, I did, uh, send out a consent. Um, and this kind of ties to the second part of this, which we'll, I'll talk a little bit more about later, of vaccinations. So I did send out, um, to, to employees if we were to offer surveillance testing, you know, would you, you know, consent to participate in this random? So that might be, um, another angle, especially since we have some, um, vaccinations rolling out, that doing that with some surveillance testing might be, um, a good thing because the one thing that it, it seems to have done in those places is it's a nice confirmation, Mary thing. It's a much stronger thing than an independent health check. So we may, we may pilot it there and then see how it goes and then extend that out. We would also perhaps have authorization, um, if in those situations where somebody or an individual student, um, experiences sudden symptoms in school, because kids do experience sudden symptoms. Oftentimes there's anxiety when they're sent out of the room to the, to be evaluated by the nurse and there's evaluation. And sometimes they return to the classroom. If there, if there was consent there, we may be able to use these as a, as an individual confirmation because if there were symptoms, and it was a positive test, that's an easy confirmation. It's not like, you know, that might be another, another element that I know some schools have done. And I think that that is also an additional layer that provides a little bit more just information and people feel less anxious when there's more information.
Thank you. Uh, I think, um, two things. I think if, if the kids could be sent home, that, that could resolve a lot of this. I mean, if that would be, that'd be nice for, I don't know if that could happen for kids, but certainly for the staff, that'd be a, a nice way to do it. They could take it home and, and do it before they come to, to work. As far as the kids, um, yeah, I agree with Megan. There's a lot of potential for problems there. And I think besides maybe some high school kids, I mean, all parents would do something like this with their kid. It wouldn't be something, you know, if you were to go to a doctor anywhere, you'd go with your kid. So I think having parents either come in with their kid to do that, or, you know, be there at the same time makes sense. I think most parents would want that anyhow, but I think maybe that's something we should consider. That's the way it would be done. Not just consent for it to be done, but you know, for them to actually come in.
Right.
But otherwise, I mean, I'm in favor of, I mean, anything that, that helps us get through this, uh, makes sense to me. Jacqueline.
Sorry. Are there, uh, other than the mental health issues that Megan brought up and the logistical challenges that you already mentioned, are there any other arguments against this? I mean, I, I think it sounds like a good idea. Um, I'm just wondering, is there anything we're missing?
I don't think, I don't think so. I think there, I know, obviously I think the logistics of that, um, I think that the, the, the people implementing testing, if we don't do it through, if it's younger, if it's anyone younger, um, who needs this done, I think there'd be some anxiety there if, if we had to train people to conduct it. Just because it's close contact and even with PPE, I think there's some anxiety around that. Um, so I, but that to me, that I put that in a logistical camp. I think that if we were able to train people, um, similar to how it would be as a, as a home thing and use this as a tool, it might be a good, um, surveillance device. But I think for, for employee, I, I think any additional testing is, is a positive. It is a, it is a relatively, uh, as far as COVID tests go, it's a, it's a relatively non-invasive one. It provides you with quick results. You know, you're not waiting, you're not just, it's not in some lab, you're right there with your sample. So I think there's some positives there. It's a widely used, um, card. It's, you know, I, I supplied that information and there's a lot out there on it. Um, the problem with any antigen test is it's not, you know, the most, it's, it's not meant to be like, um, going to your doctor. We would never say this substitute's visiting your doctor if you are a contact. We wouldn't, we wouldn't use this testing as a way to, you know, rule out contacts or things like that, but it's good surveillance. It's just good additional data to have. This is actually the test that schools used, um, when they were designated zones and they had to, to test 20%. This is the test that they used when they were required to do it.
Anybody else have anything they want to weigh in on that part?
Okay. So then, uh, as it relates to vaccinations, when I had put, first prepared my presentation, um, at, watching the governor's update, the governor made an announcement that schools needed to start to prepare for vaccination. So I found out that I was supposed to do that from a governor's update. And so we clarified immediately, you know, that I think a lot of the, the, this New York State Superintendent's Council got involved and was like, what does that mean? So we talked to the health department, health department advised us, um, you know, to start assembling lists of employees. So we got some samples of, of what to do. So I had begun that process at the end of last week to, to identify individuals who would, um, wanting to, who would want to engage in any school-coordinated, uh, vaccination. So now to be clear, the school cannot provide vaccinations. Uh, we have been contacted by a local medical partner about a coordinated event. Um, it does not mean it would be a district, like we will not necessarily do it like in the district. Uh, but they reached out to both, uh, Red Hook and Rhinebeck about a coordinated event so that people wouldn't feel this, uh, kind of refreshing of the links and running to this all over the region, um, to do that. Now, that was on prior to the weekend, on the weekend, once the announcement was made and there were vaccines, you know, I think many people went and, and got the vaccination. So I then sent a follow-up email asking for employees to let me know, um, that their, their personal health information is their private information, but I asked for the sake of coordination, um, I just needed to know so that I can give accurate numbers because they're, um, with our local medical partner, we're going to be able to have that event. We have no timeline for that. So I have sent the follow-up email. So I now have a spreadsheet. So people are telling me when their appointments are and/or if they've, uh, already received the vaccination. As of today, I think my count was around 25 or 27, uh, received the vaccination. And I think we have 38 or 37 with appointments this week. And there's expected, as you, you're all hearing the same updates I'm hearing, um, there's expected to be additional 300,000 doses each week and more sites and more availability. Um, we're trying to create a system so that there isn't so much anxiety around, like where do I go? As soon as I get a timeline, I will push that out to our, um, employees. I think that the, the walk-up, pop-up vaccination at Northern Duchess is where many of our employees went, um, without appointments. They did a walk-up, which as that spread on social media, uh, Russia people came and it made it much more harder for people to obtain. And the group 1A people still jumped the line, um, as well, which as they should, I mean, they're in the group 1A. So that is where we're at with that. I was, I was actually, you know, I was very surprised in a good way about the number of, of, of our employees who were able to get appointments. Um, and that's through the power of, of them. They did that through sharing links with each other and, um, working together, uh, to do that.
That's great news. I mean, I think more employees that can get it, that's, uh, that's terrific news. And, um, it's really nice that Northern Duchess was helping to put that together. That made it much easier. Originally they said they'd have to go to Westchester somewhere. So that's, obviously that makes it much easier. So do you think there's going to be still like another, will there be like a day or there's going to continue providing it at Northern Duchess?
No, wait, no, no. So yeah, they are, they're looking to organize a scheduled, uh, period. So it wouldn't be not that pop-up. The pop-up, we completely surprised to me. I found out about it from an employee who then by that point had already been shared circles and, and people were telling me who else was in the line. And then that's how we were, you know, getting the emails back in. This is, um, separate from that. This is also Northern Duchess, um, but it would be a scheduled event. So it wouldn't be having to, to wonder. And we're trying to, uh, get nailed down exactly when that will be. It's very difficult, as you can imagine, because it's unpredictable. Of what that supply is in this first initial burst, you know, there were, there was many. So, um, you know, we're optimistic that can be done very soon. But they don't have, they haven't, um, finalized a particular date, but they have reaffirmed on a daily basis, um, their commitment to having it be a coordinated, um, event for the school district.
Great. Thank you. All right. Anything else on this topic? Anybody? All right. I'm going to move on to the comment section. Um, good news. Anyone have any good news they want to share?
I have one. Um, I just wanted to, to point out and, uh, can thank, uh, in, in working with Rhinebeck Responds, uh, the district was able to connect 70 families, um, with some support during the holidays. Um, and Rhinebeck Responds was extremely generous with that. And they worked with the school staff to, to, to identify those families. Um, but I, you know, just really blown away when I was listening to the overview of that. So there was, uh, you know, a lot of, of gift cards that were, were shared and I think it made a tremendous impact. Um, and it was done, um, over the holidays. So I just wanted to put that out there.
That's really nice. Um, any other good news? Anybody? Okay. I'm going to move on to any old business. I don't have any. Okay. Uh, we have another opportunity for public comment. Anyone like to make a public comment? All right. Uh, move on to other. Mark, I think I saw your hand first.
Yeah. So, uh, I just want to, uh, remind everybody that I sent out the information that was provided at the Duchess County School Boards Association meeting last Thursday. Uh, we had a presentation from David Shaw regarding, um, contract negotiations. And, um, there's some data there about, uh, various settlements with, for area school districts. So, um, just, uh, information for your review.
Thanks, Mark. Did see that. And Steve?
Yeah, I just wanted to say Diane and I received an email today about some, um, pretty significant delays from the BOSI's capital project that may, um, cause them to extend their rent, uh, agreement, which I, I guess could funnel down to us for added expenses for budget. And I just wondered if, if Tom and Albert had any information on that or how we could get some, some clear facts on that.
Well, uh, Steve, I am aware of it, but at this time I can't really see anything at this time. Uh, BOSI's is looking to, uh, do some potential action tomorrow. And until that happens, I, I'm really under, uh, I'm aware of a situation, but I can't really speak to it at this point. At our next meeting, I can speak about it, but at this time it's, uh, it, it, it hasn't even gone to the Duchess County, uh, BOSI's Board yet. And that will happen tomorrow. But I am aware of that situation.
All right. Thank you, Tom. I think, um, obviously it's something we have to watch if it's going to affect us in our budgeting. Um, we might need to ask, uh, Mr. Hulley to come speak with us or send us an update, something so we know what's happening. But obviously we have to wait and, uh, we'll, I guess, hear more on this at the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Any other, other? Steve?
I got one quick one. I just want to tell everybody the Rhinebeck Science Foundation is doing a virtual fundraiser February 5th. It's going to be a a wine and, uh, chocolate pairing with Old Mill Wines and Oliver Kitter. Um, so stay tuned for that. Look for updates on, on Facebook.
They give a lot of support to the school. So if you're able to attend, please do. Any other, other? Okay. I'm going to move on to our action items. Can I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following consent items?
Second.
All in favor? Can I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Nicole Ruder as short-term substitute teacher at the certified BA COVID rate of 195 per DM for three days per week, effective January 13th, 2001 through June 25th, 2021. Sorry, 21.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Christine Jensen at a short-term substitute teacher at the certified MA COVID rate of 210 per DM for three days per week, effective January 13th, 2021 through June 25th, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. The motion passes. A motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Elizabeth Van Kuren, Senior Account Clerk for the purpose of retirement, effective at the close of business on March 31st, 2021. Any discussion? Uh, I just want to thank her. She's been with us for over 36 years in Rhinebeck and, uh, that's a long time. And she's a valued member of our staff. So I want to congratulate her on her retirement. All those in favor?
I'm not.
You don't get to vote, Tom.
That motion passes, even with Tom's objection. And a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Christine Fritz, our Reinbeck High School science teacher for the purpose of retirement, effective at the close of business on June 30th, 2021?
Second.
All those, any discussion? And obviously, Ms. Fritz has also been with the district for many, many years. And we wish her well in her retirement at the end of the year. All those in favor? Okay, that motion passes. And can I have a motion to move into executive session for the employment of a particular person?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, we'll be moving into executive session. Thank you, everyone who attended this evening.